I will call this quorum meeting of District 544 to order.
I will. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Matthew Limke.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present.
Stephen Viglino.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So move.
In a second.
I'll second that.
Kirby, Kirby?
Kirby, yeah.
And the discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The agenda is approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to the Fergus Falls 544 Education Foundation for their generous donation towards the KSS auditorium sound system and the playground equipment at Lincoln School. Someone offer that?
I'd like to offer that resolution and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
And Missy, will you take roll?
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Viglino.
Absolutely.
The resolution is adopted.
Awesome. Okay, we'll move into our reports and we'll start with Kirby Anderson.
Yes, 544 Education, we meet this Thursday at noon. But a couple of highlights that we'll probably be discussing this week. We did serve Talk on a Bag to the, to our staff during staff in service last Thursday in August, and I don't remember the exact number, it must have been several, two or three hundred, wasn't it?
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And everything went well. And then we also did Talk on a Bag at Otter Pride Night this past Friday night. And we usually serve, or we usually plan for five hundred, and in the past couple of years, we've actually run short right towards the end. So they should be planned for six hundred, and we served about five fifty. So that was good. It was a beautiful night. Otters won. Finance committee meeting has not met, but we will meet this next week, either Thursday or Friday. Activities has not met recently, but just want to make a comment. When I was at the game on Friday night, the last time we had an activities meeting, we went over all the fencing and a lot of the changes they've already made, and they were met with open arms by the fans. They just, there were a lot of them sitting over on the, on the east side of the waiters where they never used to be able to sit, so it's pretty, pretty nice. Had a lot of positive comments, so that's my reports.
Awesome. Any questions for Kirby? All right, then we'll move to Melanie Cole.
All right, I was busy looking for my picture, my agenda from Region One Board meeting. We met, and the highlights really are that we continue to plan for the new director. We had several Web 14 applications that deserve review, and so that was, and it was still open then, and so that was a good turnout. Just talked about the different programs with their enrollment numbers, and we are fashioning a post-employment opportunity for Bob Wheeler to do the Northwest Links, because that's such a federal bureaucratic boondoggle of submission and reimbursement for, for the telecom equity. So rather than burden my new director with that, we will contract him for a year so that other person can get their feet on the ground. So that's, that's basically what we talked about there. Meet confirmed and not meet. And then for the special ed parent negotiations, we have that on board tonight.
And you're not on the Special Ed Co-op Board anymore, but I think we're meeting with them on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we will.
To do asset distribution.
Asset distribution. We'll have a, a meeting to try to continue forward with each of us doing our own thing.
Yep.
Any questions for Melanie? All right, and then Missy Hermes.
Curriculum review meets next month in October, and Policy Committee.
Next week.
Yeah, we have, we'll be presenting another policy.
Awesome. All right, my report Wellness Committee only meeting here, it's either this week or next week, and then Buildings and Grounds policy have not formally met, but will be. Matt Limke.
Yeah, so my report is more just on the state of Minnesota on this one. So the National Federation of State High School Association reported just on our overall state's participation this year, for last year, excuse me, and it grew about five thousand students from the year before. So Minnesota ranks tenth nationally with two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine students participating in league activities. Some of the highlights on this is, in addition to the participation that does happen, there are some activities that the students participate in, league-sponsored activities, and that's about fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty students. And so, for example, cheerleading is two thousand eight hundred and fifty, Clay Target is eight thousand six hundred and two. Just for name, just a few of them that we participate in. One of the things that was kind of interesting is that girls' rugby continues to grow in Minnesota with more than a thousand students now competing during the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. So that is an increase. And just our largest sport probably participation-wise is, is football, eleven-man football. And in Minnesota, there's twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-four boys that participate and one hundred and four girls. So there's just some numbers for you. And then just real quick, just a thank you real quick, again, for Otter Pride Night. Just a thank you to the volleyball girls for, for helping out the games. This event could not take place without their help. There's over thirty-seven girls that help all year of the year, and it's greatly appreciated. And Missy pitching this year for the bouncy house, which is always a wonderful experience for any adult to control, but very much appreciated. And also then just the custodial help.
Yes.
With cleanup and tear down and stuff like that, because it is extra work for them too, and I really do appreciate that for us being able to host it and stuff, so.
Matt, to those numbers that you gave that, for Minnesota?
Yes.
Is that now including the new ninth graders now?
That would be just sophomores through, because this year would have been the soph, that would have been twelve sophomores through seniors.
Okay.
All right, and then we'll move on to Steve Viglino.
Staff development actually met today, and we have a, on our agenda, we have a plan for staff development, but you guys got to pack it. So the staff development last year ended up with a surplus of about ten thousand dollars, which they can carry over, so they're going to start with fifty thousand, which is great. I just wanted to read off the, you know, it's, it's not just a big pot of money. They have budgeted for different things, and I guess for the public's benefit. They have the individual training requests, so if somebody wants to go to a, you know, some sort of a training to help them do better at the job. Individuals can request, you know, kind of reimbursements for expenses for that. There's some money budgeted for grade level requests that affect the entire grade. For instance, there was a teacher that is going to a, a training that she'll be representing the entire sixth grade that we approved tonight. Cultural competency, which was introduced in twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so there's money set aside for that. And as well as the money set aside for the staff development days on January seventeenth next year and the twenty-eighth. In the meeting, we talked about assigning different committee members to things. We approved some requests. Talked a lot about the training that's going to happen in, like I mentioned, January seventeenth. Just real quickly, the topics that they're looking to cover is trauma-enforced, trauma-informed Q-centered therapy. Phyllis, they're hoping to get Phyllis Bratton back for that. American Indian history, English, English learning, positive behavior intervention. There'll be a session on reading, we're not sure what that will look like yet. Then there's a, a section that they're hashing out about, you know, modifying or accommodating, adapting curriculum differentiation, things like that. Be a class on that, maybe a class on mental illness, and as well as another one on suicide prevention. So it's a pretty proactive meeting, and they're just going to be locking down some speakers for, for that in January. And that is about all that happened, so.
Can you say why the committee decided to go back to having the, those staff development days in January and March and the spring, winter and spring, instead of having one in the fall? The, the board, the committee had decided that to have it in the fall so that that, whatever was learned at the staff development day could be implemented during the year, not so late in the year?
I'm not sure what is it that, do you remember Jeff?
No, they didn't explain the change.
Maybe with the.
Might have been availability to fulfill us, which I think they're still trying to work out, but.
Yeah, they haven't locked her down yet, so it could be.
Speaker?
Could be speaker. That's probably the easiest answer, but I don't know for sure. You can ask though.
Any other questions for Steve? All right, just bringing a drink.
Well, good evening. In a little over five years, this might be one of my favorite reports to give tonight, so I'm really quite excited to be here. I just want to thank everyone for a fabulous start to the school year. There was so much planning and movement that took place over the summer in preparation for this new school year, with the opening of the north half of Lincoln School for kindergarten and all the changes that take, took place. It's just really a lot of positive things happening in the district right now, and I thought we had a very positive experience with Open House Night. People were excited to be in the buildings, excited about the upcoming school year, and then that kind of just launched into our workshop week and the start of school. So there's always little tweaks and things to work out at the start of every school year, but things have gone very, very smoothly from everything that I have heard, so appreciate everyone's hard work. We were hosting the auditors last week, so again, thanks to Renee and her staff for being so accommodating to their requests. I appreciate the long days and the hard work that go into that. Special thanks to everyone that helped out with Otter Pride Night. It was a beautiful evening. We had a lot of families in the gym. Thanks to the board members that were there that night. Thanks to Minnesota Motors for essentially covering everyone's admission into the game. It was a great contest with DGF. Otters played really, really well, and it was well-attended. Thanks also to the 544 Foundation for the Talk on a Bag fundraiser. Again, just a really nice showcase event to start our school off in, in a great fashion. Some congratulations are due. First of all, our Teacher of the Year, Andrew Kowalski. Andrew is a special ed teacher for KSS. He has a, a pretty challenging caseload, if we're going to be completely honest. There are some students there with some, some significant behaviors, but Andrew models professionalism and humility and grace, and we're very fortunate to have him on our staff. It was really nice to see him recognized and honored by his peers on our Thursday district-wide convocation. So congratulations to Andrew, very well deserved. During the coaches' meeting, Derek Meyer was recognized as the twenty-three, twenty-four Head Coach of the Year, and he does a great job coaching, specializes in cross-country and some of those running events, and they're off to a really successful start of their season already this year, so appreciate all that Derek does. And then the Assistant Coach of the Year was Denny Heistad, and I believe he's got long roots in the Fergus Falls District, working with our student athletes. And it was really nice to see him honored as well. So congratulations to all those folks. The Otters are back-to-back champions of the Central Minnesota River Run, so congratulations to both the boys and girls cross-country teams, a great start to the school year and their season. I threw this in there because I do like the opportunity to see what our graduates are accomplishing out there, and I ran across this reading Craig Olson's sports column, column. But Sophie Rousch had a tremendous career in hockey for the Eau Claire Blue Golds, and you can see some of her honors up in the right-hand corner. She was the Female Athlete of the Year for Eau Claire Blue Golds, and then she has signed a contract to play professional hockey. So good for her, what a great testament to her experience in the girls' hockey program here, and then the success she had in college, and now this next stage of life. This one makes my day right here, so the MCA comparison data. As you look at the chart in front of you, everything in maroon to the right two-thirds of the table, as I'm facing it, are cells that our students outperformed twelve-area schools, and those range everywhere from our immediate neighbors to Alexandria, Detroit Lakes, Moorhead. If you see a few cells that are in a light gray, that means that our students tied those other school, another school. And I do want to, just for clarity, let people know that we're doing our comparison on the column that says Fergus Falls, Cleveland slash KSS. And I'll explain a little bit more why later, but we're really trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison of brick-and-mortar student achievement in comparison to our neighbors. So the data that the cells are colored in do not include IQ, and they do not include our ALC, which serves students from multiple districts, so not just Fergus Falls. As you look at the district comparison by subject area, so this is district-wide averages in proficiency. In two thousand twenty-four in math, zero out of the twelve surrounding school districts scored higher, a higher math average than Fergus Falls. So we were number one in math. We were number two in reading, second only to Battle Lake. And in science, again, we were number one of all other twelve-area or regional school districts. So I am really, really proud of the work that's been done by our staff, really proud of the accomplishments of our kids, the support of our families. Academic achievement is really, really important to me personally, that our students are learning well and being successful in the classroom, because to me, that's the foundation that they will take with them throughout the rest of their life to pursue their hopes and dreams. As you look at where we compare in terms of state averages, so if you look at that two thousand twenty-four average achieved at Fergus Falls, sixty-one percent in math, sixty-two percent in reading, fifty-eight percent in science. And you look at the far right, you see that our students are sixteen percent above the state average in math, thirteen percent above the state average in reading, and nineteen percent above the state average in science, and those are district averages again. This is the part that I really want to educate the public on, and that is the fact that in Minnesota, parents can choose to opt their children out of the MCA tests. And that has become more prevalent as the years have rolled on. But if you look at our scores and you say, well, sure, you're the top in the region, but we'd like to see your percentages be higher, just understand that every student that opts their child, or parent that opts their child out of those tests, though we are penalized, our results are penalized by that student not participating. And so as you look at this math percentage opt-out across the top, you see that our youngest students, there's a very little opting out, but by the time you hit grade eight, it grows to seven percent, and then fifteen percent are opted out of the eleventh-grade math test. Looking down, and this is Cleveland and KSS. If you look at reading opt-out, again, very low in the early grades, but by the time you hit middle school, six percent, and then it jumps to fourteen percent in grade ten. And then in science, the state doesn't track the opt-out percentage at the high school level, but Amelia Lamar did figure that out for us, and twenty-five percent of the students do not take the science MCA score or test in tenth grade. So if you were to add, you know, a percentage of those students that are opting out into our base scores that are reported, those really could shift those numbers considerably. And so it is, in my opinion, it is unfair that public education be penalized for something we have absolutely no control over, and hopefully at some point in the future, the state will reexamine how they treat those opt-out scores. On the ALC side, looking at opt-outs, less prevalent, thirteen percent on the math, or excuse me, ten percent opt-out on the math, seventeen percent opt-out on reading, and then the three percent isn't correct, but seven percent opt-out on the MCA science. But here's the next slide will really be eye-opening. As you look at, and I certainly have done this, some of our low proficiencies at IQ. And granted, we have students coming in and out of IQ throughout the year. They're not necessarily in our system from start to finish, but if you look at the numbers of opt-outs here, you know, fifty-seven percent, sixty-nine percent, by the time they are juniors in math, seventy-four percent of the parents are opting their children out of the test. We can't get a fair result of our work based on those conditions. As you look at reading in the middle, you see again, essentially forty percent and higher of parents opting their students, their online students, out of the tests. And then in science at the bottom, thirty-five percent opt-out on grade ten, but seventy percent in grade five, forty-seven percent in grade eight. So to me, really, really eye-opening and adds another layer of understanding about what, what's impacting student proficiency data from public education throughout the state. This is our enrollment. When we talk about our enrollment this year, I put some numbers up on preschool, but just keep in mind that those are going to continue to increase throughout the year. We do have some slots available. I think virtually all of our full-day slots are taken up right now, but we do have some half-day slots that are still available. As you look at kindergarten, that's close to a wash from last year. And then because of our grade level changes, this becomes a little bit wonkier to try to track. But the bottom line is that in brick-and-mortar, we're down twenty-three students from where we were at the start of last year. It's a one percent decrease. But overall, we started last year at twenty-nine oh one full-time students with thirty-nine part-time, and that's all related to IQ. This year, we're at three thousand one hundred and fifty-six full-time and sixty-one part-time. Those are IQ students. That's an eight-point-eight percent increase in full-time students and a fifty-six percent increase in part-time students. So our enrollment numbers, brick-and-mortar, virtually stable, but a huge, this is the largest number of students we've had in IQ Academy since we were in the throes of the pandemic, so. Homecoming's coming up on September sixteenth through the twentieth. Congratulations to the royalty that will be recognized. In terms of the programming or events that week, Monday will be Pyjama Day with coronation taking place at seven PM. Tuesday is Minion Day, I'm not really sure what that is, but I'm sure it's fun. Wednesday is Pinkout Day, and then Thursday is Squad Goals Day, and then Friday's Maroon and Gold Day with our traditional Ironman volleyball, Powder Puff Football, the parade, and then the football game against Thief River Falls that evening, culminating in the homecoming dance. Facilities, so updates, Lincoln School, other than little minor tweaks here and there, has been opened to, I think, a great reception. I mentioned it in a board report, but I had the opportunity to stand at the door as a group of kindergartners went out on the playground for the first time, and so it was wonderful to see their excitement. If you get a chance to walk out on that surface, it is a lot spongier than what I thought it would be, so it's kind of a unique experience to go out there on it and, and see. We have the new gym, Gold Gym floor. I heard positive comments from our community on how that turned out. Kirby already mentioned the new fencing that's around the stadium and how that's been a positive change. The new concession stand was open for business last Friday night.
I worked that. That's why it wasn't at Otter.
This week, the ALC and Armory parking lots, that work will begin, that slated to start on Wednesday. We did gym sound systems over the summer. That will involve a little bit of tweaking, Wi-Fi improvements. And then coming up is the auditorium sound and lights with great thanks and appreciation to the 544 Foundation. And that is still on target to be done in advance of our first concert event in September. That's like the twenty-fifth, somewhere right in there. So that, that will be exciting for our community to experience that. We are still looking to hire, so please reach out to the district if you are looking for work, and I will entertain any questions.
So on the MCA scores, if they opt out, you said that we're penalized for that. Essentially, isn't that student given a zero?
Yeah, we're given a zero for the student. Okay.
So it's not as if they didn't take the test, it's as if they failed the test?
Correct.
Every question? Okay.
Yep.
And I assume with IQ, because they have to travel to take the test, that might be a deterrent?
That would certainly be a deterrent, yep. Yep, we try to do regional locations, but we sure can't do door-to-doors.
But when they're used to being at home doing their full education to leave a test, it might not be very inviting to them too.
So they don't have a method of doing, I mean, I've taken, I've taken tests with the remote proxy for my licensing and stuff. We don't have that kind of a process. Like you.
No, we do not.
Do you have any idea how our optional numbers compare to other districts?
I don't. We can, Amelia may have access to that data, so we can do some checking, but I'm not sure about that right now.
The food truck was a resounding success, I can say it from the customer standpoint. I was just observing, and we still had the other two lines also in the old concessions, and all three of them had long lines and were very busy, so I think you guys ran out of a lot of stuff.
I, I was on hot dogs, and I was always.
Right there.
Yep, so anyways. I might be all the general, like in a fun way.
It was pretty popular.
I'm a volunteer.
Especially when you consider that five hundred and fifty people had already eaten inside.
Yeah, it's like, what? Yeah. I'm surprised.
No, it was a good deal. And again, you can eat, there's like two or three places to get in line on the food truck.
Yeah, there's two places on, on either side, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's cool.
But yeah, it'll be good once the kinks have worked out.
Yep.
How, how it's going.
Yeah, fun stuff. Any other questions? Then you're, with your permission, I'll just proceed into the proclamation. All right, so Minnesota's School Board Recognition Month, September twenty-twenty-four. Public school boards have heart. Whereas Fergus Falls School District recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Fergus Falls School District appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and where our school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and where our school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal laws, and where our school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fergus Falls School District recognizes and salutes the members of the Fergus Falls School Board by proclaiming September twenty-twenty-four as School Board Recognition Month. And I will say on behalf of the district, thanks for all that you do. And I will say on behalf of the district, thanks for all that you do. We're very fortunate to have your commitment and dedication to our students and staff and community.
Thank you.
Your pleasure.
Okay, we will move into our general consent items. We have the minutes from August 26, 2024 Board Meeting, and then I'll go back to Kirby for the bills and treasurers report.
Yes, on the treasurers' report, we did have approximately $4 million going out in bills this month. We had $5.5 million receipts, primarily because of a timing thing with MDE this time of year. They have different calculations of when we get the money, but this particular month was a good month for money coming in. So right now, the fund balance is approximately 22 and a half million, and that's up from about 20 million last year at this same time. So the fund balance is in good shape. On the bills side, we did go through about $800,000 in bills in the general fund and about $18,000 in food service, and Natalie, Natalie came in early with Renee and I, and we went through 45 pages of bills. Lots of soccer officials, swimming officials, lots of scorers, volleyball, that's that time of year. Some of the other things that we saw, they did have to replace a mixing valve at Roosevelt on the hot water, on the water heater, that was about $7,600. There's some auditorium things for lighting, $13,000, and that's gonna be our $24,000 job, and I think 544 is paying for about half of that. That was either the half they paid or the half that they're not gonna pay. We had some, about $8,900 of equipment at McKinley, fire equipment, so things like mats and so on for the first, second, third graders over at McKinley. About $20,000 went into, we had to replace some middle school desks. And then lots and lots and lots of pens, pencils, paper, construction paper, you name it, this time of year, it's one of those things. The fax curriculum required a new reach in refrigerator, that was $5,500. I think over at McKinley, they had a new outdoor glass, must have been for the backboards, that was approximately 20, almost $3,000. Steve Johnson was our consultant on the middle school auditorium, that was $3,500, and so it's good to see that that project is moving on. And the rec sound system, $15,000. We always like to keep that as an old-style fieldhouse, but the sound system has also been old-style, and now, where it's like the old speakers, where you can't hear in half the places, and that's being...
Charlie brought it up.
And then we had a cool assessment of $8,000 by USA Aquatics, but I think we'll get some of that back if we approve them to do the work. So again, thanks to Natalie for coming in early and Renee for having things in order. She always does.
Any questions for Kirby?
All right, I'm only going to personnel, Elaine. Good evening, everyone. We have a few items here, as we continue on the start of our school year. Under certified staff hires, we have a number of IQ teachers, Hannah Herzog, Jennifer Peterson and Wendy Campbell, those are all elementary teachers at a part-time status. I'm expecting them to possibly increase as numbers continue to increase. Barb Hoffman, she's our ESL teacher, but we tweak her contract each year because she doesn't work Fridays, so it varies a few percent each year there. So that is why that's on the agenda item this time also. Then under long-term substitutes, we have some leave of absences that we're covering. Michelle Oliphant will be a long-term substitute as a special education teacher. She's working mornings only from the start of school year through 11/15. Peter Phillips, long-term substitute language arts teacher, that is for the full year in a part-time status, because he is substituting for a teacher who is part-time. And then Terry Page, also a long-term substitute for a leave in the area of science, and that's effective to that, kind of mid-November date time. Overload contracts, we have two overload contracts for the school year. Kyle Owens, that's for the first trimester. Joel Haicas is for the second and third trimester for the school year. And staff resignations, Brian Erlenson, you hired him to food service, he switched over to custodian before, we could hire him actually as a custodian, but he has resigned since that time. So his last workday was August 30. Jennifer Odegaard, a special education care professional, she also came in with us. And then support staff hires, we have Lexi Sargent, parent educator here at the middle school, and then two special education professionals who will start next Fri-, or this Friday, excuse me, the 13th, Jessica Wilson and Cassie Forster. And so that's for the hires, and then we have the 2024-26 contract between Fergus Schools and the Special Education Care Professional Association, that was spoken about a little bit earlier, and then the individual contract for student services coordinator, which is our, kind of our student, our hallmark help person, Jody Kidder, and that's for, effective for the school year. Jody has been in that position in the previous two years. So I would recommend those for board approval.
Elaine, can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
So moved.
In a second?
A second.
Any discussion on them? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those items are approved. We don't have any old business, we'll move into new business. Our first item is the 2024-25 IQ Academy Fergus Falls Student Parent Handbook. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That handbook is approved. The next item is the Staff Development Proposal for the Use and Implementation of Staff Development Funds for the 2024-25 School Year. This is Lexi's vote. Can I get a motion to approve that proposal?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that?
So the $40,000, is that, is that $40,000 new money this year, or is that 10 from last year and 30 this year?
It's total 50, so 40 is about it.
Total 50, okay. Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That proposal is approved. And we have a contract with USA Aquatics for professional design services for the pool. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
A second.
And then any discussion? We'll be reviewing and discussing it, their initial proposal if we approve it. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Contract is approved. Then we have School Board Policy Number 104, our school district mission statement, which we did a reading of at our last board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve that policy?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That policy is approved. And then we have the 2024-25 Post-Secondary Enrollment Options, PSCEO contract between Alexandria Technical College and ISD 544. Can I get a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Contract is approved. And then that is the end of our meeting. Our next regular school board meeting is Monday, September 23, at 5:15 here in the Otter Community Room.
Oh, I was gonna interject quickly. Missy, could you give the date of the school board panel at M State?
Yes.
19th, isn't it?
That one is September 19.
Yes.
At the M State. Let me make sure of the time.
Is that M State?
Yes, 6:30, candidate forum at the M State.
Thank you.
Kristi Hastings is...
And A U W?
Yep, and Kristi Hastings is gonna moderate.
Great.
Still waiting on the questions, but yes.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.